The following presentation is ceremonial only. The actual Troy City Council meeting of June 4th, 2012 will begin after I retake the chair. Please let me introduce you to Mr. Michael Davis, our mayor for the day essay contest winner.
My name is Michael Davis and I am your mayor for a day. I want to first read my essay. It starts out with the words, "Citizen participation in government is important because we are part of the government, so we should show an interest in it. We should vote because it is given as a privilege. The people of America should run for office so we, so people have a wide variety of options." I would like to welcome Father Eric Fedewa, who will give the invocation, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in standing. Welcome, Father Eric Fedewa.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord Jesus Christ, we come before you. We ask that you would send your Holy Spirit upon the entire council of our city. Help them to always serve with humility, knowing that the, the power that has been given them is, has its source in you, so that they may serve your people and be able to draw them even closer to you by their wonderful, humil, by, by their humble service to their citizens. And we ask that you would help us to always follow that will that is always meant for our greatest good. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. You may be seated. The June 4th, 2012 meeting of the Troy City Council is now called to order.
We had an enjoyable walk through the city hall in the police department, and during the walk-through, Michael said that after this event, he feels more like he might eventually want to be the mayor.
Watch out.
Yeah. So, the June 4th, 2012 Troy City Council meeting is now called to order. Roll call, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Mayor Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Mayor Proton McGinnis.
Here.
Councilmember Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Teetz.
Here.
Forum present. First on our agenda, I want to welcome our city manager, our city affairs manager, Cindy Stewart, to offer a gift on behalf of the Troy, of City of Troy employees, excuse me.
As everyone knows, the Troy employees, they generously give of their money so that they can wear jeans on Fridays, and for the month of March and April, we, we chose MAD. So, we have a check for $755. I'm going to present to Beth, and she's going to tell you a little bit about MAD.
Thank you so much, Cindy. We so want to thank the employees for thinking of MAD. It will be put to good use. Our mission is to eliminate drunk driving, to help the victims of the violent crime, as well as to prevent underage drinking. So, these dollars will help us locally do all of that, and I would like to mention that we do have a couple of things coming up. This is party season with graduation parties. We do have a wonderful resource for parents. If they'd like to visit www.mad.org/the-power-of-parents. It's a, we have a free handbook that they can download, and it will help them dialogue with their kids about drinking. It's a wonderful resource and something that they can use key at this time. And then, we also are pleased to announce that we'll be hosting our Mothers Against Drunk Driving Michigan Lifesavers Law Enforcement Event for over 800 departments right here in Troy at the San Marino Club. So, we're looking forward to that. That'll be August 1st. Departments from throughout the state of Michigan, sheriff, police, Michigan State Police, and we'd love to have City of Troy Police as well, so want to mention that, and that's, again, all provided through donations such as this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no carryover items and no public hearings, so we'll proceed to public comments. As a reminder, I'd like to restate that the audience should be aware that all comments are to be directed to the council rather than to city administration or back to the audience. Also, there's a timer in front of the mayor's chair that turns yellow when there's one minute of speaker time available, and turns red when the speaker's time is up. In order to make the meeting more orderly and out of respect, please do not clap during the meeting, and please do not use expletives, or make derogatory, or disparaging comments about any one person or group. If you do so, there may be immediate consequences, including having the microphone turned off, being asked to leave the meeting, and/or the deletion of speaker comments for any read broadcast of the meeting. Speakers should also be careful to avoid saying anything that would subject them to civil liability, such as slander or defamation. Please avoid these consequences and voluntarily assist us in maintaining the decorum befitting this great city. First on the list is Matt Benkowski. Good evening, Mr. Benkowski.
Thank you for taking me, taking the time, or thank you for the time to let, for me to speak this evening. My name is Matt Benkowski, and I'm one of the many people involved in the campaign to recall Janice Daniels. My purpose in speaking tonight is to provide an update on the campaign, as well as to clear up a few misconceptions that have been spread by Mayor Daniels, as well as her supporters. Mayor Daniels, your supporters have approached this podium and called us anarchists and hooligans. Your supporters have compared us to cartoon villains. Well, we've also been accused of, falsely accused, of illegally using city property for our radical purposes. And Mayor Daniels, your supporters have been very fond of extending rude and obscene gestures to us. Furthermore, your supporters have implied that our organization is funded by some, by some outside group. Nothing could be further from the truth. All of our contributions have come from individuals, and 85% of those individuals reside within the city. No unions, political parties, or groups of any kind have provided us funding. But we can handle the criticism and the obscenities, and for the record, our organization is not full of anarchists and radicals. It's made up of unpaid volunteer citizens who, like me, are simply exercising the right to recall an elected city official as explicitly provided for in our state constitution. After seeing your performance over the past six months, we simply want the opportunity to decide whether or not you are the best person to lead Troy for the next three years. Finally, Mayor Daniels, on your fundraising website, you state that a small group of citizens are attempting to remove you from office. I certainly wouldn't refer to the size of our organization as small. Over 100 different circulators have submitted petitions to our campaign. But most importantly, we have now received signatures from more voters in Troy than voted for you in November. But our campaign is not quite over. We still need a few more signatures to ensure that this recall question is firmly placed on the ballot in November. As such, we all have volunteers outside the Troy Public Library for the final time this weekend. Any citizens who have not had the opportunity to sign a petition are welcome to drop by the library this weekend to sign the petition, maybe check out a book or DVD. If you can't make it to the library, feel free to email us at janice, recalljanicedaniels.com. Our volunteers will be happy to meet you at your home. Again, thank you for the time tonight, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Benkowski. Ron Butterball?
Good evening, Mr. Butterball. Thank you also for the opportunity to talk. What a terrific city we are privileged to live in. Excellent services in all areas, a skilled and professional staff, six strong council members committed to the best interest of our city, a newly approved balanced budget committed to, which retains all important services, fiscal responsibility that is the envy of every city around us. And despite claims to the contrary, we enjoy one of the lowest tax rates in Oakland County. Challenges? Well, yes, but we have the ability to deal with them. Our community is strong and vibrant, with many involved citizens. Examples are all around us. Saturday's community garage sale sponsored by the Friends of Troy Seniors, the 24-hour relay for life in support of cancer and cancer survivors, a community center parking lot overflowing with people and cars, an award-winning library, nature center, historical village, I could go on and on and on. In Troy, life is good for all of us. Now we have the opportunity, or the need, to find a new city manager. Finding strong leadership to fill this position is critical to our future success. Mr. Fleming and all the council members should be commended for their vision to consider municipal, military, and corporate world candidates. I think that's great. City managers, mayors, city staff, and all employees need to be held to the same standards that employees everywhere are held. No higher, but certainly no lower either. With 30-plus years of experience in corporate management, I can assure you the following. If anyone in a leadership position in a publicly-held company refused to accept the corporate mission, statements, policies, and goals, calling them whimsical, they would be subject to immediate termination. If anyone in a leadership position makes bigoted remarks and then defends those comments on the basis of their First Amendment rights, they would be subject to immediate termination. If anyone in a leadership position publicly embarrassed their staff with an unwarranted rant about their performances, that leader would be subject to immediate termination. Likewise, if anyone in a position of leadership participated in over 12 hours of budget study sessions, which were generally very, very good, and I compliment the council for the work that they've done, but if somebody sat in those sessions for over 12 hours and provided no meaningful dialogue or contributions, their career would be very short. This would have been the mayor's opportunity to explain her positions. Instead, she remained mostly silent, unable to defend her prior statements that claimed mismanagement, free spending, free taxing, and quote, "huge slush funds." Her deception became obvious by her silence. Performance such as this would not be tolerated by any company. Why should the mayor be treated any differently? That is why I joined the Recall Janice Daniels team. The signature submissions next week will be successful, and the recall election in November will succeed. As evidenced by the signature campaign, your removal, Mayor, is widely supported and anticipated. In closing, I'd like to say I am really grateful to be a part of this team, 100-plus signature collectors, the leadership of Matt and John, and a back-office team who have done research and verification of every single signature that we have received. Now, in closing, I take no joy in this, it's very sad, but I ask you, Mayor Daniels, to do the right thing. Resign your position, save yourself and the city five months of stress and embarrassment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Butterball. Cynthia Wilshire?
Good evening. Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Fleming for staying on the job that you were elected to do instead of leaving and running for higher office. You've let the community know that you care about Troy, if they had any doubt. Choosing a new city manager is a big responsibility for the council to decide and will be the direction for the city in the years to come. The citizens of Troy also depend on this council to appoint the best qualified candidates for boards and committees. We do not need political appointees, nice people, or controversial people to make important decisions. We need the best qualified. Mayor Daniels, you told me that you'd like to give everyone a chance to serve. That's really nice, but not everyone is qualified for a lot of the positions that are on these boards and committees. This is a multi-million dollar business, the City of Troy. Would you hire someone unqualified or difficult for your business? Or would you want someone that knows what's going on and is not insulting everyone around them? If a committee is operating well and persons are up for reappointment, continue with them. It's not broken, don't fix it. I thank the council for reappointing the charter revision candidates. We work well together, we respect each other, and we get our business done as requested. This past week, I read two articles in the Detroit News about an appointee in the City of Detroit. He acted very nasty and said things that were inappropriate. The first on May 31st, and I quote, "A deputy fire commissioner that violated the code of conduct for appointees was unappointed immediately." The second was on June 2nd, referred to the fact that this person was fired for his unprofessional conduct and inappropriate talk and embarrassing the city administration. This was brought to Mayor Bing's attention, and he acted on it immediately. I would like to know if the Troy city of today has a code of conduct for appointees. I know you have other code of conducts, but do you have one for appointees? If you have one, I'd like a copy of it. If you don't, I strongly suggest that you get one immediately. The topic of Gordon Shupke and his comments has been brought up before the council and has been much talked about all over town. I feel his remarks are offensive, insulting, and embarrassing to many people. I feel his conduct is offensive and very unprofessional. Maybe his First Amendment right to free speech, but I feel this behavior calls for his unappointment to the planning committee immediately. I feel he is not the best candidate we have for this appointment, and we don't need further embarrassment from comments in or about our city. I think enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Peters? Good evening, Mr. Peters.
Hi, Mayor, Council. First, I want to thank for letting me speak, and I think you're all doing a good job. You know, y'all don't get enough credit for the work you do here. As far as free speech goes, Harry Truman comes to mind when you're talking about people, and there's an old saying, the road to Hades is loaded with morality, and there's another saying in a democracy, "Democracy fails because we're all not angels, but democracy works because we're all not devils." And I think that we should try to keep that in mind. I understand slander and defamation and, and the scourge and whatnot in the city, but it seems to me that there's too much of this mudslinging going around, and I think people should be allowed to do their jobs. Okay, as far as the City of Troy goes, you know, I'd like to hear, have the folks from Troy call in and whatever issues on your mind, just call in and give these folks a, see what you want to have them hear, and whatever issues on your mind, just give them an email or call in, and you know, they may not, but I'd like to, you know, I think, just like to hear what, what's out there, find out what's, what you'd like to have done. A couple of folks I was talking to, they were talking about bicycle paths. I'm a biker, and I know some of the folks here are bicycles, cyclists, and I know in New York City they have paths, and I seen that they're doing some of the sidewalks, but I'd like to have some studies on that sort of thing, and because in particular, like some of these major roads, like Rochester Road, I guess you could get like into telegraph and, but I think they kind of like need bridges over them where people could, folks go over top, because they, they aren't really the, you know, and I think people, now there's a kind of demand for that sort of thing, when people would be using that. Okay, and also the county, I think, and even the state might be able to play a role there. As far as the debt limit goes, I don't think we should go into the Hoover mode. I heard where Secretary Rice was talking about a 3% growth and a 5% unemployment rate before these cuts would kick in, and I think, you know, we'd be heading for, you know, I don't think it's really a good idea right now to kind of cling to that. As far as, one thing I'd mentioned about Syria a while ago, I don't support these killings of people, but I do think that maybe there's a need for a independent commission, if they, would they allow that to happen in there, neutral folks, pro and con, et cetera. Also, I think the Arab League should come up with some kind of checks and balances on these emerging nations for their governments, not only for one branch to counteract the other, kind of similar to what we have here, where one, one does not have much power over the other part. And other than that, maybe, yeah, I guess that's just about it. I hope they have a big turnout open west, but other than that, yeah, okay, thank you very much, and.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Tracy Mitchum?
Good evening. I was not prepared to come here today. I didn't even know there was a meeting, and I've never even been in this building before. And I would just like to come to you guys to ask for a ban on this K-2. West Bloomfield is meeting tonight also, and there's been a lot of publicity about this. I'm sure you guys have all heard this. I am coming as a mother to you. I have personal experience with this. My son is in rehab from being addicted to K-2. I've been dealing with this for two years. I've dealt with the police system. I've asked them for help. I went into these smoke shops last year. They were selling it outright, right in the counters. I went in, didn't tell them who I was, what I was there for. He was, one of the men were trying to sell it to me. They explained each, each packet, what it was, how high you got at each one of these. These smoke shops know exactly what they're selling to our children. Today, we had a protest. We had seven ladies come out in one of the smoke shops. They're selling it, they're underground now. It's not, I sent four people in this weekend to try to buy, you know, just pretend they were going to buy it, and they're saying, "No, no, no," but they're still selling kids. We have firsthand information that, I could give you the information, but I don't, I think you said not to say people's names or whatever, but I just, I come before you guys to please help the families. These, I know that we have, these children have personal responsibility to say no. I understand that, and that is for them to do, but I don't understand how we're letting them get away with selling this outright, and how we're not putting a ban on it. Can we have an emergency ballot? I don't understand how all that works, but if we make it illegal in, in Troy, that they could be getting fined, they could be, the cops could be on top of this. Families are being torn apart from this. When I, when this happened to us two years ago, it was like a bomb went off in my family. You know, we're working through it, and it's better now, but I just, you know, want to bring this to you guys, to know that there are families and faces and children being hurt, they're being killed from this. What can we do? What can you guys do to help us and to take a stand and let this not be in our city? Let's stand with West Bloomfield and all these other cities, and you know, that's really all I have to say, and I would just ask that you guys would please consider this and know people are being hurt and kids are being hurt, and they're selling to our teens. My son was a minor, and they were actually giving it to him and say, "Be my tester. Go out and smoke this stuff." His friend went into convulsions for 15 minutes the first time he tried it. These men don't care. I went in and I talked to the guy, and I told him, "You're selling to these kids. This is what it's doing." You know, he acted like he didn't know. They know what they're doing. They know what they're doing, and it's hurting, it's hurting our youth, it's hurting our city. This is going on in our schools. So, I thank you for listening, and I hope that something really good could have happened from tonight, and so, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. I, I think I can say for the, the group of us, our heart goes out to you, and we are going to be addressing this later on in the meeting.
Good, I'm glad, and we'll be here, but thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. James Savage?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Good evening, Mr. Colpepper. Nice to see you again. It's been a long time. I'm just wondering where Mr. Benkowski got the comments that he was describing, because I've been almost every meeting here, and some of the comments that he was describing, I don't recall hearing, so I would kind of like to see what meeting it was at where these comments came up, so that we could take a look at the replay and find out who is abusing who. Anyhow, last month, I voiced an opposition to the two recall positions being circulated in Troy. I called for the organizers of both petitions to withdraw. I haven't heard any response from either side, so I call upon them again to put the welfare of the city ahead of personal feelings, and for most of the comments, they are based on personal feelings. Whether the petitions win or lose, the disruption will result in a cost in time and money that Troy cannot afford. One of the most serious problems our community faces is the deep divisions that have existed for over 15 years to my knowledge, and maybe existed before that. This situation will not improve while we have a divided council. This council needs to close ranks and approve a resolution to oppose these petitions. The mayor, councilmembers Fleming, McGinnis, and Slater are named in the petitions. So, I call upon one of the other councilmembers who do not have a personal interest particularly in this, or has no, say, but not on the recall, so I call upon one of those members to step up to the plate and propose a symbolic resolution to oppose these petitions. We need leadership from the council and to start moving Troy forward, and this would be a first step, because if you seven members cannot get together to even just support one another, then we're in bad shape. So, hopefully, tonight, we will see some leadership from somebody and say, "We're going to be on this council for six months, a year, two years, whatever, and we have to work together and start tonight," because there's many other things we need to look at in this city. and start tonight, because there's many other things we need to look at in this city. We need to look at some of the priorities, and I could go on all night, but I only have five minutes. So we need to look at such as eight-foot sidewalks along Big Beaver, never see any pedestrians, but we have no sidewalks leading to the elementary schools, none. We even have elementary kids going to school when there's only, when there's a fire lane and it's a narrow road, no sidewalks. We've had all the excuses why there isn't, and the reason there isn't is because the councils have never stepped up to the plate and says, we would do this. It's easy to condemn properties when the management and council want it and take properties from people, but to be able to put a sidewalk, this takes some leadership, because generally residents are not going to go along and say, well, I don't have kids in school, why should I pay for a sidewalk? Right? But the sidewalks are needed nevertheless. So, that's just a couple of things that we really need to take a look at that will basically improve the lives of our citizens. There's traffic problems we need to look at, but always, we are mired in these conflicts, and so, get together, council, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. That concludes the persons who have signed up to speak. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? I see a hand raised.
Good evening. I did sign up, and you know my name is Kaima. Okay, I just want to bring it to the attention of council that I did write an email to Ms. Daniels and City Council and about the appointment of Gordon Shepkey and the reappointment of Glenn Clark, and I wanted to know what Ms. Daniels had responded was, Gordon Shepkey is a fine man who expresses his opinion bravely. Mr. Clark has a long career of active participation in the political process. Differences in opinions are a healthy part of a representative republic. Selective outrage should be guarded against on the political spectrum. Best regards. And my response is, Mr. Shepkey is ill-informed and reflects poorly on our city. His disparaging comments do nothing to exhibit integrity or professionalism. He is also not as qualified as others who were nominated. As far as Glenn Clark being an active participant in the political process, that does not equate to having integrity or professionalism. It's been proven that he is less than truthful and will stoop to any level to achieve his goals. I highly doubt this is what our founding fathers felt should be the norm for the political process. Wasn't this country founded on freedom and to fight tyranny? If Mr. Clark relied to achieve any goal he set forth, what else is he capable of? Also, the fact that his campaign finance methods are in question just lends more to his deceptive and unethical means being a part of his normal method of operation. Is this the picture you want of our fine city? One that incorporates those who don't value integrity and respect, but rather the end result, no matter what the cost and who's to say what his end result is? It's time to stop all this political posturing and power grabbing. We need leaders that are thinking about the city of Troy. The city of Troy was a world-class destination for families and businesses alike. Today, it is not the case. The damage done to our fine reputation will take a long time to repair. These two individuals will only shed a continuous shadow on how Troy does business, thus dissuading families and businesses from locating here. Also, is this what we want our children to grow up believing in? That you don't need integrity to get your way, just do whatever it takes, even if that includes bullying and lying? It is ironically interesting that you, Mayor Daniels, are taking an interest in the children of our community while still supporting individuals such as these two. As shown in previous history, hubris can be an individual's nemesis. The city of Troy does not need leaders or individuals and committees and boards who possess this trait, as it will ultimately result in the demise of once what was once a fine city. It's said that selective outrage is merely acknowledging that different people get upset about different things. Well, I am upset about what's happening to my city. It's a city I've lived in for 38 years, and I love to call it my home. This is beyond the political games. It has to do with the future of my community. I take exception to those that continuously use lies and unethical tactics to get in a seat of power and prey on those citizens that unfortunately have not done their homework. I take exception to those that are using the municipal level of government to push their ideologies regardless of what the city's needs are. So you can and will call this whatever you wish, Ms. Daniels, but the bottom line is that it is unacceptable. Let's put an end to the damage being inflicted on our fine city and start electing and appointing those with knowledge, integrity, and professionalism. The city of Troy is a community, not a political volleyball, and it's time we started behaving as one. We need leaders dedicated to this community. This, Ms. Daniels, is why there is so much interest in the process to recall you. And by the way, this is for the welfare of the community. People are thanking us for what we're doing. They want civility back. The personal aspect is, you have harmed our city. It hurts, and we want it fixed. And, Mr. Colpepper, welcome.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I'm a resident of Troy since 1985. I would like to thank you, Mayor Daniels, for your not voting for the tax increase in the trash hauling contract. We have a long-established company in Troy that was handling the garbage real good, but then, golly gee, they just had to have a tax increase because the price of gas is going up. Well, Shelby Township, a few months before us, had the same thing. They had a long-established trash hauler, and, golly gee, they just had to raise the price of gas, or the price of trash hauling, because the price of gas had gone up and their costs had increased. Well, Shelby Township, caring about their residents, put it out for, put the contract up for bid again, and they got another company, long-established in the area, Rizzo, to match the old contract price and, at the same time, give a discount to senior citizens in Shelby Township. The council in Shelby Township worked hard for the residents, and we have six council people here that just said shove it down their throat. We're in hard economic times, the Great Recession, policemen pulled out of the high schools and the library closed one day, and you've got the crazy people on council that voted for a third train station within three miles of Troy. It's just crazy. So thank you very much for not voting for the tax increase. You need more people to help you, I guess, but I would sure love to be in Shelby Township so I get that discount on trash hauling for seniors. I'd also like to say, what has happened to the Troy Chamber of Commerce Club that promised to do the maintenance on, or pay for the maintenance on the alleged train station site? I don't see any written contract obligating them for that. I don't see any contract at all. They don't represent the business community. They only have, 7% of their members are from the Troy business community, or they only represent 7% of the business community in Troy, where 93% do not belong to the Chamber of Commerce Club. And I think one of the reasons they don't is because they don't appreciate the run-up in expenses in Troy, the high labor landscaping in Troy, and the huge amount of trees blocking the view of the beautiful Somerset Collection. I also wonder, these people that voted for the, this train station, are really everybody going to park in the parking lot way in the behind where it is proposed to be now? Are they going to get out, go into one building, get their tickets, go up three stories in the elevator, go across the overpass, go down three stories in another elevator to get on the train platform and then on the train? Or are they just going to do like the people in Birmingham do now? Just park their car and walk over to the platform and get on the train? Because if most people do it that way, you won't have anybody using this edifice to government waste. It's just crazy. I can't believe that they voted for that. I mean, it doesn't make sense. By the way, has the federal government approved the final design for the walkover from the one elevator to the other elevator? And if they had, how did they bid the job before the plans were finalized? I mean, there's so many dubious things in the train station and the rush to, we've got to get it approved, we've got to get it approved, despite the fact that for seven, eight years, the council postponed it and said, you know, it doesn't look good. And of course, Birmingham said, it doesn't look good to us either. But the spend and tax liberals on this council thought it was a great thing to punch the residents of Troy and keep the police out of the school and the library closed one day a week, just so we can have this edifice to government waste. It's really sad.
Thank you, Mr. Griggs. Yes, sir. Welcome. If you could announce your name.
Thank you. I will. My name's Larry English. The language we should all be speaking. I want to, I hadn't planned on coming here tonight. I was over, going to go look at a car tonight, which I did, and I heard that there was going to be some recall people here tonight, and I just wanted to say to each of you, you know, I may not agree with any of you at any one time, as probably all of us know, but I appreciate your time and effort that you put into this council business. I'm sure you put a lot of time in, much more than you get paid for, and especially the physical abuse that you get paid for, and I appreciate that. And I tip my hat to each one of you. I appreciate, and I'm proud of you, just like I'm proud of the Troy Police Department. I'm proud of each one of you. And again, I may not agree with you, but I'm proud that you put yourself out there. You make your comments, which people may not agree with, and they absolutely have a right to disagree, but some of this verbal abuse that you take is too much, and I just want to say I appreciate that, and I support you 110%, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Crybabies and bullies. The crybabies and bullies have once again made their presence known. They lost an election and, as a result, have started a recall campaign. This will no more succeed than a Wisconsin effort will succeed tomorrow. They embarrass this community by exposing one word from a private conversation to the news media, and they continue to do so. Since her installation in November, they've continued to harass and bully this mayor, again demonstrating to the public how rude they are and how they are setting a terrible example for our children. These are the same people that don't want to see bullying in our schools and high schools, but they come here every council meeting to continue to bully you, Mayor. And as to our tax rate, yes, it's low, but again, they keep eliminating the other part of the equation, the SEV, and depending on whose data you're looking at, Troy is either the second or third highest SEV in the state. We don't need a large tax rate. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Would the council like to take a break, or should we continue with response to public council comments? We'll continue with the response to public comments. Would anyone like to speak? Councilman Henderson?
We, are we going to be talking about K-2 and Spice later on today? I'd like to just address the folks that came to talk about that for a second. Now, my family was affected by illegal drugs when I was a child, and as a parent, I had to deal with that as well, and I thank God that legal drugs weren't available when I was dealing with this in my family. And I'm also embarrassed to say that several of the places of business that I go into frequently have been selling K-2 or Spice for a number of years. I know about it. I've walked past it, and never did I raise my opinion at those locations. And I think it behooves us all to, instead of just sliding your card at the gas station, get out, go inside and pay and see what these folks are doing, because, you know, this stuff is, it's detrimental to the health of our kids, and we just need to, as a community, do whatever it takes to eradicate it.
Thank you, Councilman Henderson. Is there anyone else who would like to say anything? Mayor Protem McGinnis?
I had two points that I wanted to touch on. I believe Cynthia brought up the code of ethics for our board and committee members, and I was just wondering if the city attorney could address that.
Mayor?
Yes, I'm not aware of any code of ethics being applied to all of the board and committee members. Certainly, if council wants to do that, that is something that we can present to you for your consideration, and certainly it is reasonable. It is done in other communities as well. One of the things that you may wish to do in that ethics policy is provide some language to provide that any violation could result in removal. That's not something that you currently have. You don't have the ability. Detroit is a lot different than what it is here in the city of Troy, so your abilities to remove somebody at this point are hampered, but it is something that you could consider, and if there's a majority of council that would like to see something like that, I'm happy to work with management and bring something to you.
Did you have another issue that you wanted to bring forward?
Well, just a comment on that. I would be interested in perhaps having another discussion about that as a council. I don't know if we really have enough information to tell you to go forward, but I think it's something that we should consider, just in light of the fact that we've been making a lot of appointments over the last few months to fill positions that had been held in abeyance while we were restructuring the boards and committees, and in light of some of the things that have happened, I think it's something that we should address. I think that we understand the importance of vetting the candidates before we put them into office, but in the instance, and I'm not necessarily saying with specificity anything that's happened in the last few months, but I think that there's definitely been some outcry from the community on how to address those issues, and really, we don't have the tools to do anything at this point. All we have is to rely on our own vetting process. So I would like to maybe see that come up in a study session, or if there's anything else that council members want to weigh in for or against that. I guess this would be a good point to do it, to see if it's even worth scheduling something. And my other comment was in regards to Mr. Griggs' comments. There were quite a few, and I know that we've addressed these, but I think it's important for anyone that's tuning in right now for the very first time. There was a comment made specifically that because council made a decision to go forward with the transit center and pass that by a vote, it then in turn took police officers out of our schools, and there was something else that he indicated that we had to cut back service-wise in order to fund that. So I just want to reiterate, I don't even know if this is a question that needs to be posed to city staff, but the money for the transit center is not money from our general fund. So the things that were listed in the comments were not cuts to services that were made because we've decided to build the transit center. That money is going to be coming from the federal government, and it's going to be coming from money that's specifically earmarked for transportation dollars. So those were not cuts in services that you saw as a result of the transit center, and I just want to point that out for anyone that might be tuning in for the first time.
Returning to the issue of the K-2 problem that we have in society, Mrs. Mitchell, I asked city management to start to draft a proclamation to state our position on that, and he's provided us with a good draft, but we're going to be working on that for the next couple of weeks, and at the next meeting, we'll probably have something to announce to the public. Councilman Slater?
Just like to piggyback on what Mayor Protem McGinnis indicated about the ethics. I would support looking into that and bringing some information back to council. Maybe we could look at what some other communities have been doing as some examples, but... Maybe we could look at what some other communities have been doing as some examples, but I think it is time for us to have the ability to address issues that have been coming up recently. So I would support that.
Is there any other comments? Okay. There are no postponed items, so we'll move to regular business. We have no mayoral appointments, so we'll move to city council appointments. The zoning board of appeals appointment process calls for a tally vote. Is there any discussion requested prior to this tally? Councilman Slater?
Mayor, I asked to postpone this item so that I could have the opportunity to speak with some individuals, and I have done that. And I've had my discussion, and at this point, I'm ready to vote.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? The tally, oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Sorry, I just wanted to point out that in making my decision for the two members that I'm going to be voting for tonight, I did consider prior service on our boards and committees. I considered attendance, and I considered any other issues that have come to light that have caused controversy. And for those reasons, I will be voting for the two members that I'll call out in the tally vote, but I thought it was important to mention the things that I based my decision on.
Okay. Mrs. Bitner, the tally vote?
Counsel, as I call your name, just issue, or just list the two members that you would like appointed. Mayor Daniels?
Bartnik and Clark.
Councilmember Campbell?
Bardnick and Chambers.
Councilmember Fleming?
Bartnik and Clark.
Councilmember Henderson?
Bartnik and Clark.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Bartnik and Chambers.
Councilmember Slater?
Bartnik and Chambers.
Councilmember Teetz?
Bartnik and Clark.
Would you like to read the results, please, Mrs. Bitner?
One second. Okay, the two nominees will be Bartnik and Clark.
Mayor Protem McGinnis, would you like to read the appointment resolution, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolved that the Troy City Council hereby appoints the following nominated person to serve on the board and committee as indicated. That would be the Zoning Board of Appeals for two terms expiring April 30, 2015, Michael W. Bartnik and Glenn Clark.
May I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Protem McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Fleming. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
No.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
No.
Councilmember Slater?
No.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving to mayoral nominations, I'd like to postpone the process for making nominations to the local development finance authority until the next regularly scheduled meeting to be held on June 18, 2012. Next are the city council nominations. Mayor Protem McGinnis, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolved that Troy City Council hereby forwards the following nominated persons to serve on the boards and committees as indicated to the next regular city council meeting fraction. Building Code Board of Appeals, per ordinance, our city manager, Michael Culpepper. The Employee Retirement System Board of Trustees Retiree Healthcare Benefits Plan and Trust, per ordinance, our city manager, Michael Culpepper. The Historic District Commission, I have one name to afford at this time for a term expiring 5/15/2015, Doris Sucher. Traffic Committee, for a term expiring January 31, 2013, Stavon Popovic.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion moved by Mayor Protem McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Slater. Discussion?
Madam Mayor, if I can just clarify for the Historic District Committee, I'm waiting to hear back from one person that could potentially fill that spot, so I would just like to hold that position for the next scheduled business meeting.
Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes. Motion passes. There's no requests for closed sessions, so we'll move to item I-4, Proposed Amendment to Chapter 13 of the Troy City Code, the Historic Preservation. Would someone like to move the resolution forward, please?
Mayor?
Councilman Fleming?
Resolved that Section 3 of Chapter 13 of the City Code is hereby amended to eliminate 4820 Livernoy as an historic district. A copy of the ordinance amending Chapter 13 should be attached to the original amendments of this meeting, and a copy of that ordinance shall be recorded with the Oakland County Register of Deeds as required by state statute.
May I have a second, please? Support. Moved by Councilman Fleming, supported by Mayor Protem McGinnis. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item I-5, Appointment of SACRA, and SACRA stands for South Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority. So this is the Appointment of SACRA Representative and Alternate for the city of Troy for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2012. Could someone please move the resolution forward? Madam Mayor? Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby designates Tim Richneck as the SACRA Representative and Monica Ireland as the alternate SACRA Representative with terms expiring on June 30, 2013.
May I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Protem McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Fleming. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Richneck and Ms. Ireland. It appears we have an opportunity to have a phone conversation with Mr. Philip Robertson, the project overseer for the Mercer Group. Attorney Bloom, would you like to make some comments?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Unfortunately, there is no ability to have a telephone conference in this chamber, so what you would need to do, Mayor, and I think that there has been expressed some interest in at least talking with him, figuring out what his next steps are. So you have been provided this proposed resolution as a regular business item, but also, Mayor, there is an opportunity for you to recess, have council go into the boardroom, and then after your discussion with Mr. Robertson on the telephone, if it is your desire to approve the contract, then you will have the opportunity to vote on it before the meeting is concluded. So that is set forth above unless anyone wanted to act on it at this point in time. You could have it appear at the end.
Well, I would move that we should pass a resolution to postpone the item O-6 to a study session at the end of the meeting. Is there a second?
Mayor? Mayor?
I'm sorry?
You wouldn't actually need to postpone it just because it's already printed on the agenda. You could just not act on this item, and then it'll come back at the study session item.
All right, very good. So we'll just move on then to item I-7, which is the deficit elimination plans for the aquatic center and the sanctuary golf course. Would someone like to move the motion forward? Madam Mayor? Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves and adopts the aquatic center and sanctuary lake golf course deficit elimination plans presented at this meeting.
Second? I'll second. Moved by Mayor Protem McGinnis, seconded by Mayor Daniels. Discussion, please?
Mayor?
Councilman Fleming?
Of course, I'll be supporting this because we don't have a choice, but I think this just indicates previous decisions, you know, put us in a bind here. The aquatic center is operating at a deficit. Sanctuary Lake Golf Course, huge deficit, and basically, hopefully, it's lessons learned for the future. There's certain things that cities should not be involved in, and let the private sector take control. And I think these are two perfect examples. But we got involved in something now, it's a burden to us. But of course, we have to support this, and we'll do so. It's unfortunate that we're in this position.
Thank you, Councilman Fleming. Any other discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes our regular business. We now move to consent agenda items. Are there any items to be removed?
J-6.
Okay. So we...
Yeah, well, actually, it's J-6, and I was just really going to address the first one, which is...
Item number three.
Item number three, item three under J-6 specifically.
Okay. So could we have someone move the resolution forward on the remaining items?
I'd be glad to do that.
Councilman Fleming?
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of item J-6, which shall be considered after the consent agenda items, other consent agenda items.
Support. Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Mayor Protem McGinnis. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Returning to item J-6, or yeah, item J-6, Mayor, I mean, Councilman Fleming, the floor is yours.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I was amazed at the amount of backup support and the time and effort that the city has put in on this. The traffic committee has put in on this issue. There was not really a good decision to be made here, but I commend all the effort that's gone into this, taking citizens' concerns seriously. There was a huge package here. At the end of the day, I'll support exactly what the traffic committee is recommending, but it's not going to make everybody happy. But I guess the point is here that if you're living on a street and there's something taking place in your street you don't like, you need to speak up, because I think the majority rules in this case. And it's a split decision. Some people want, it's a small section of street. I drove the street today. I looked at it. I can see why people would not want parking on it. But the bottom line is, there are more people on that street that want the no parking signs removed than there are people that want to leave them. So I think the lesson here is you need to speak up and make your voice heard. And so I will certainly support what the traffic committee is recommending here, that the no parking zone on the south side of Hickory between Plum and Kirkton be removed. But it's not an easy decision, but basically, I'm coming down on the side of the majority in what the traffic committee is recommending. Mayor?
Councilman Henderson?
One of the responses to the questions that I had had was that we don't have a lot of streets in the city that have stop signs on both sides, which, you know, I get that. I understand that. But is there an historian in a building that can tell us why we originally put two stop signs? Is there a practical reason that there are two stop signs, one on each side of the street in that particular area?
No parking.
Or no parking signs, excuse me.
Mr. Van Det?
The no parking restriction on the south side of the street came about in 1979, April 16, 1979, and it was a result of residents who were concerned about, well, there was a lot of employee parking, the businesses along Livernoy were parking along the street. And so residents came to the city and asked that it, parking on the south side be restricted. And so it was. There's three blocks. The first two blocks are no parking on the south side. The last and most easterly block, you can park on the south side. And of course, on the north side is no parking for the entire length because of the presence of the fire hydrants, which is standard city policy.
Thank you.
Mayor, that begs a follow-up.
Yeah.
Is there ample parking along the businesses at Livernoy now to handle all the parking that they need, or would we just be opening up that situation again?
It's my belief there is ample parking. We certainly don't see any violation of the no parking sign near Livernoy, and that alone just leads me to believe that there is ample parking there.
Mr. Van Det, I read through and didn't see any justification for the mail truck being able to get to the mailbox, because that was my biggest concern as to why. I would think that the no parking signs were valid. They're timed between 8:00 in the morning and, I believe, 6:00 in the afternoon, Monday through Saturday, and that does give the mail truck an opportunity to put mail in those mailboxes.
Yes, Mayor, you're absolutely correct. And that was also one of the concerns back in 1979, that with people parking on that side, that they wouldn't get mail. And it's absolutely true that if the truck cannot get to the mailbox, then they will not deliver the mail. They do not get out of their vehicle to get to the box if it's being obstructed by a vehicle. So you're absolutely correct. That is a concern, and that does happen if it's obstructed by a car parking near the mailbox.
That would be the reason I'll be voting no on this. Councilman Slater?
Yeah, I looked at this, too, and there's an awful lot of data back to 1979. And generally, I usually support recommendations coming from staff. But when I looked at the totality of, I think I have to disagree that there's a majority of people that live in that small section that are in favor of taking the signs down. I read, at least I thought I did, that some of the names on the petition live on the north side of the street, so they wouldn't be affected by the parking on the south side. I thought it was four to three, from the count that I did, out of 10 houses.
There's a total of 17 property owners on that block?
I'm discounting the ones on the north side, though, because I, personally, I don't think that, they're not being affected by this.
There is seven on the north side, and five of the seven signed the petition to remove the parking on the south side, and four of 10 on the south side signed the petition to remove the signs.
Four of 10.
Four of 10.
And there were three that indicated that they were not in favor of removing it, I believe?
Yes, yes.
So in my opinion, there's 10 houses that are affected by this, four, yes, three, no. To me, that's not overwhelming. And I also share the mail delivery issue. Back in '79, nothing's changed, and I can tell you, I live on a street that if that mail truck even sees something in front of that mailbox, they're passing you by. And those that are in favor of taking those signs down on the south side, that mail truck's going to just drive right past your mailbox if there's a car sitting there. So I looked at everything, and I just, I don't think anything's changed since 1979, in my opinion. And I don't think four to three is going to change my mind.
Thank you. Mrs. Bitner, I think we need to split item one away from items two and three.
Can you do that?
So I would propose a resolution to do just that, so that we can vote on the two items. We haven't had any discussion, but I would think that we're probably in agreement that that's acceptable, and item one would be left then to vote. How should I handle that?
I think it's actually item three.
You can...
Oh, item three.
You can vote to separate.
Separate out. Okay. So...
I'm in favor of that. I'll second.
So the first vote would be to separate J-6, to separate item three away from the other items. Then you'd vote on item three, and you'd vote on the other items.
Okay.
So there'd be three votes total.
So moved by Mayor Daniels to remove item three, seconded by Councilman Slater?
Second.
Separate item three out, yes. A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis? Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes, and now we will address the resolution of item three. How we're going to vote on that, would someone like to move the resolution forward? Councilman Teetz?
Could, could we just go through one more time about the north side, south side issue? I'm, I'm sorry, I lost, lost in the numbers there, so I'm gonna, I, I'd appreciate hearing it one more time.
Yes, there are, on the north side, there are five property, I'm sorry, there are seven property owners, and five of the seven signed a petition to remove the no parking signs. On the south side, there's 10, and four of the 10 signed a petition to remove the no parking on that side.
Did you have follow-up?
Yeah, just, just to be clear, four of the 10 said to remove it. How many said to keep it?
Three.
Three, yes.
And, but we've had, we've had emails and phone calls, you know, back and forth that are pretty much split on this issue, and seven out of, of, of the, I'm sorry, nine of the, out of the 17 is just a little over 50%, but it does include the north side, where, you know, they're, they've signed a petition to remove parking, no parking on the south side, and that's the majority of the signatures.
Thank you. Madam Mayor? Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Can I just get some clarification? As it stands right now, there is parking that's allowed on the south side after a certain period of time, every day.
Yes, after 6 o'clock.
Correct. So we're really dealing with hours, daytime hours, and those are Monday through Saturday, correct?
Correct. Monday through Saturday from 6 a.m., I'm sorry, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
And those are, I guess I would just describe those as working hours, so those are hours when I'm assuming some, some of the residents on that street will be at work. And in addition, I think there's another concern as well. I mean, the people that are going to be using that ability to park during those daytime hours on those days are most likely going to be residents, or people that are visiting the residents, and so I'm assuming that they're going to take that into consideration, especially the ones that are asking for it to be removed, that if the parking that they are allowed to have during the daytime prohibits the mail person from delivering mail, it's going to be prohibiting, you know, their mail from being delivered. So I'm assuming that they've taken that into consideration, the people that are going forward and saying that they want the no parking restriction lifted. So I'm struggling with this, because I really think that there are very valid arguments on both sides, and I think really whatever decision that we make, there are going to be residents in that area that are not happy, and residents that are happy. But I'm, I'm trying to determine in my own mind what the difference is from now and the time that this was put into effect. Obviously, we do have residents that are coming forward. It's a majority, depending on the way you look at it. I guess in terms of the whole street, not just one side of the street versus the other. And also, I think the big concern and the reason that that was put in place in the first place is that business overflow, which in my mind would have been a valid reason to put those restrictions in place, and to put them in place during working hours when people would be parking there. And I think based on what's there now, we're not going to have that issue anymore. So at this point, I, I would tend to perhaps go along with the recommendation based on those reasons. I think the initial factor that that's, that was in place is no longer there, and obviously there is a big restriction placed on some of those residents, and that's why they decided to come forward to us and ask us to consider this.
Thank you. Councilman Slater?
Just as a, sort of a rebuttal to that, if you drive down the street from Livernoy's to Plum, there's no parking at any time, and that's, that's what was affected by the Livernoy's issue. From, from Plum East, it's from 8:00 to 6:00, and if you read from 1979, it was done specifically for mail, because of mail delivery. And if you look at the gentleman's email that initiated the petition, his email indicates that, well, the, the mail delivery guy can just get out of his vehicle and put the mail in the mailboxes. Well, I can tell you, that is not going to happen, and I'm wondering if he thinks that's going to happen, because that's what he said in his email, but that's not going to happen. And, you know, I just don't think it's right to use the people that live on the north side of Hickory as examples, because they can park their cars on the, on the other side of the street, and it really doesn't have an effect as much as the people that live on the south side. I think those are the ones that we should really be dealing with, and that was four to three. And that, to me, is not overwhelming for me.
Councilman Fleming?
The people who live on the north side of the street, if I'm not mistaken, their mailbox on the south side of the street as well. So they're voting, knowing that they could not get mail as well. So it's not an issue whether you live on the north side or the south side of the street, all the mailboxes are on the south side of the street. So those people on the north side must realize that if there's parking there, they won't get their mail. Did anybody understand?
Councilman Henderson?
Another question I had is, is, is this particular street a bus, a bus route to Morse?
No, it is not.
It is not. Buses do not travel up and down the street to go to Morse.
Yes, they do. There's a handicap child who's down the street that bus stops, little child, that has a child on the street. All right. Point of order.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Vandet? Well, actually, the rules, the rules of procedure do allow for the public to make comments.
Mayor, if there's a majority of counsel that wants to waive the rules and allow him to come up to the podium, then you do have that ability, but it will take a vote of counsel to allow a member of the audience to speak, other than at the public comment portion.
Can I just ask, ask a follow-up about the buses?
Yes.
You say it's not a bus route, but there is a bus, so is it, are we, we're not talking about a string of, you know, three or four buses, we're talking about maybe one bus per day?
It would appear that, it would appear that's the case. From the, the information that we gathered, it is not a, not a bus route, per se, but the gentleman who lives on the street probably knows better, in this case, than we, that there is a pickup of one child on that street.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
There's a gentleman in the audit who's been trying to get our attention, and you've received our attention. Normally, your comment comes at the, you know, public comment section. If, if, you can't speak now, but if you want to, if you, I would make a motion to allow him to speak, to, to suspend the rules, change. So I'll move, if this gentleman liked to speak, he's sat through this whole meeting, obviously has something to say, so I would move to allow this gentleman to, to speak on this issue. J-6, item three.
My support.
Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilman Henderson. Discussion? Councilman Teetz?
Is it just this individual, or if there are four or five, I just set the parameters, and then also the parameters as far as how long and so forth, just for the sake of clarity before we go down the route?
That's a good point. I will amend it to, anyone that wants to speak on this issue, and the, the time limit is a regular public comment time limit, which would be five minutes or less. Anyone that wants to speak on this issue, we'll open it up now. So I'll amend that motion.
A second for the amendment? All right. Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilman Henderson, that we waive the rules of procedure and allow any persons in the public that wishes to speak on item J-6, number three, may have the right to do so. Discussion, a vote, please.
This is the vote on the amendment to the resolution. It's Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And now you need, excuse me, now you need the vote on the resolution as amended.
Okay.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you'd like to approach the podium, please, sir. announce your name.
My name's Jim Mike, Mr. Mike. Terry.
Good evening.
We live at 310 Hickory, that's the second house off of Plum. The first four, Jim Myers is my next-door neighbor, which I'm sure quite a few of you probably know him. We haven't seen a petition on this, we haven't signed anything. We've sent, I've sent emails to the commission, the road commission, saying that I did not like this idea. My wife has sent emails to you, somebody on the board here, and she's said that she didn't like the idea. But it is a narrow street. I've been living there since June of 78. So I was there when it was a gravel road, there was parking on it. It wasn't very wide then, it isn't any wider now. True, there are some streets in Troy, like Kirkton or Hartshorn, that are north and south, they allow parking on the west side. The east side has mailboxes, and there is still enough room for a north and southbound car to pass. On Hickory, you don't have that option. If there's a car parked there, if those, if that street is lined up with cars on the south side, and you have an east and westbound car coming, someone's going to have to pull in a driveway, or pull in between the cars to let the other car go by. If for some reason you have two people that have an attitude, or just hard-headed, you're going to have a standoff in the street. Some, something's going to happen that's not going to be nice there. It's not a wide street. I noticed that the gentleman who wanted the parking there said that he did some calculations that a fire truck could pass a Hummer H2 if it was parked there. Well, an H2 Hummer is about the size of a full-size pickup truck. If you had a duly there, pickup truck with two rear wheels, that would be a tight squeeze. In the wintertime, when we have plowing, you have a snowplow now that's going to only be able to push snow to the north side of the street. Some of the cars on the south side are going to get buried, the people on the north side are not going to really be happy with all of that snow in the driveways. It's just not a good idea. It's the buses, and it is a bus route, buses do travel up and down that street. There's the handicap bus. When there's one car parked on, in the street there, and the bus is sitting there, no traffic can go by. And there are times when that bus sits there for two or three minutes, waiting for that child to come out, so it's not a direct stop and pick them up and go. So when that bus is sitting there, it allows traffic to go by, and with a car sitting there, no one can pass the bus. So they're either backing up to either Kirkton or Plum, and going around the block. So it's a danger. You line cars up there, it's hard to get in and out of the driveways. I've witnessed cars going either east or west on Hickory, well over 40 miles an hour, going through that Plum intersection. I called the police, I told them, my wife and I work, they could back their car and sit in our driveway and get the speeders if they wanted to, nobody's taking me up on it, but traffic does fly down there. And you line cars up on a narrow street, you're, it's an accident waiting to happen. And I'd hate to be responsible for allowing the parking there and then having some child step out, when you only have enough room for one car to begin with, try and swerve to miss them, or a dog, or anything else. So I don't know, I know it's a tough decision. Either way, I talked to the mail lady about three weeks ago, I asked her, because she says that, that farthest east end is always there's cars parked there. And I said, what do you do, you know, when you deliver the mail? And she says, well, I either have to get out of the truck, or I don't deliver the mail. Well, if there's cars parked, she's going to either have to pull in a driveway, or swerve in, to get out of the street, and when she pulls back out between those parked cars, now she's pulling out into traffic that's going east or west. There's another traffic hazard, not only for her, but the people driving. It's just a bad idea. It's not as wide as Hartshorn, Kirkton. I was there for a year before the parking, you know, was blocked, and it just, it's not that bad. If someone, we have three cars, a couple of years ago, we had five cars when I had my hot rod and stuff. We didn't park in the street, we shuffle them around and drive.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Is there anyone else that wanted to speak on this issue? We'll return to the resolution. Now, have we voted on moving item three separate?
Yes, item three separated. Now, we would need to move in a second to vote on item three by itself.
Okay. Can we move the resolution for item three to vote on, by itself?
Second.
All right. Moved by Mayor Daniels, seconded by Councilman Fleming. Discussion?
Mayor, I, I just want to make sure, it's the one as printed in the agenda packet then? That the resolution as printed in the agenda packet?
As printed in, yes.
No parking zone on the south side be removed?
Yep.
Resolve that the no parking zone on the south side of Hickory between Plum and Kirkton be removed? Thank you. Moved by Mayor Daniels, seconded by Councilman Fleming. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Councilmember Henderson?
We're voting now to whether or not we want those signs removed?
Right.
Okay, no.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
No.
Councilmember Teetz?
No.
Mayor Daniels?
No.
Councilmember Campbell?
No.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion fails. Fails? The, the no parking signs will not be removed?
Right.
Correct. Now, could someone please move item J-6 with the remaining two items, please? Councilman Slater?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Support.
Moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Mayor Proton McGinnis. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner?
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?[1717.73]